Two part times, that would be that, it would be, you know, all shifts covered. Uh, with regular pay for full time, there should be a five full time app, but the pay we have right now, meaning the individuals we have right now on our service, but with the looking at what we've done for everybody else is going for a private increase. So with the department, wherever there's things changing, people coming and going, the best we can do is build in some of her as you go forward. I came up with, and I'm just gonna try this out, between regular pay, full time pay, and the overtime for those kinds of shifts. And without calculating into the schedule. For all people being sick, somebody has to cover, you're still paying your sick pay. Um, just bare bones, no one's sick, no one on vacation. The payroll, and this would have to include the director as one of those full time people. Well, but I didn't put the director's pay in yet, so I was pushing the payroll without any other part of the budget at three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and thirty thousand. Currently we're not, uh, current budget if you add those numbers together, um, was maybe higher than that, 'cause I actually did not, I'd have to up that. Let's say three hundred and forty, forty-five thousand. It does, we have two hundred and sixty-five in full and part time, you know, we had then at fifty-seven. And insurance with, um, because it would be, if someone takes the insurance, it doesn't have insurance. And I don't know what numbers, like I said, I haven't even included what would cost for usually building another twenty or thirty thousand dollars, which you're gonna have to go off. So we'll do another shift in the track schedule potential. That's an initial decision to come up with some numbers. So the numbers I'm gonna present to you are based on a potential different shift going forward. We left the directors pay the same, and as we talk in every session, we'll, we'll know where that's at as we move forward. So the full time pay at a hundred and fifty-five, six fifty-seven is currently moving then over into a full time position. That we would have four full time people, and for a very long time, we've had Gloria working full time shifts, but as a part time person. So she's in the schedule as a part time person. So there's four, uh, full time positions based on salaries we currently have now. With an increase coming next year. And then one right now, just because Gloria's been at this a very long time, she has actually been working pretty much full time shifts. And may need to continue. It is, that salary's in there, and then I estimated, um, we would need to cover three more shifts during every two week period. And calculated about additional money it would cause to pay other part timers who are only working a shift here and a shift there. Or two shifts or one shift, so just kinda coming up with a total of regular pay. Reimbursement to government is the clerk. And, uh, well technically, it's the clerk, the town manager, and anybody who's working at the ambulance department. We're not gonna raise that, but the services will keep being what I'm, if you're running a revenue driven department. If we shift from some point to not being totally revenue driven, I would say we would probably drop that out of the line item. Because it would be reasons to universe government, we have to tax anything. Billing clerk is billing service per run that they bill, there's a charge, and right now, we're not, that could go up. But that's if our runs go up. So it's kinda based on what it's been for the last two years, that's not a bad thing, if the runs go off, we'll get more revenue. Um, and we have to reappropriate in a department where we, if, if we under appropriate here, which we don't wanna do. But we're appropriating based on the last couple of, you know, looking at the number of ones we've had, it would be wonderful if they increased by several thousand or more, because that increases your revenue. If your revenue's actually increasing, you can go in and do a second appropriation and make sure you cover it. But if the tax dollars, you can't, 'cause you've only taxed people once, well, that's not true, you can supplement, but I would never do that. Just be aware that right now, we're just going for a wrap, that we'd like to be different. So then overtime is both overtime that would be included in this schedule potential. Um, but it includes all the potential overtime that would occur related to holiday pay. I very carefully went through to make sure I didn't leave anything out. So we build the shifts, but like police department, when we had it, if somebody's off, somebody else works. And if somebody's off and they're being paid, you actually literally are adding a shift. So we have to calculate. So I figured out if you have, um, if you're a full time employee, you have twelve holidays, you're paid for. If you're not working, you get paid at eight hours, if you're working, you're gonna get paid overtime. So I very carefully made sure I compensated for that. And also, uh, overtime, both part time and, uh, full time are combined, and just 'cause that's part of the line item is. But I break them apart, when I have to do calculations for main state retirement down bottom, and for social security Medicaid, because there's a different way. That's billed against, or a different contribution, if you're a part time employee than there is if you're a full time employee, and then full time employees are enrolled in state retirement. And so the overtime you see compared to last year, and of course, we didn't, we were so busy, and he forgot to even print out current revenue. You have one, but I don't have, 'cause I didn't. We're, we're current revenue, but current expenses, I, and Luke's probably got it in memory, so. We're gonna be, we're already over on with the overtime for this year.
Right now, we're just paying around with four thousand over, if we keep going, it's gonna be sixteen thousand, and you might get over.
So when looking at a change in shifting, is that a twenty, for us, a twenty-four hour shift, just one crew, um, not even having a second crew on the call anymore. It's a, it's a huge amount of overtime. And that's, if, we think that's the kind of service we need, that we're gonna have to figure out how to fund it. So the opportunity is to look at, can we adjust our shifting so that we can reduce some of those costs, but not overall, and I've done some comparisons. Necessarily reduce the pay going to the employees, um, but it may change the shifting if they're working. It's not hoping to have employees make less, but we may have, make it on a different kind of schedule. And that's the calculations, or we add up, if you could, you could compare the top, you know, just leave off the fifteen down. But if you look at bottom, you'll see that as you go through, that's where the major changes are, we got a few other down here. It's, it's, it's not a significant, it's not a huge increase. And it's still just an estimate, like I said, by the best of my ability, I included, um, all of, assuming that five, uh, in this case, if it's five. I have people working five shifts, a different number of hours than a twenty-four hour shift versus four, which is what the twenty-four hour shift. We're also building into it, uh, an on-call portion of shift, so the standby pay is literally on-call pay. And that would have to be included in that calculation. So we're kinda just, that's how the numbers come out, is looking at changing. At least that's, that's what this budget proposes, that we might have calculations for.
And obviously, you did put anything for rent expense?
Yes, because we aren't actually charging in rent at one forty-eight Main Street, they're paying for electricity and their fuel. So, um, we're not putting it in there, 'cause as long as they stay there, we're not gonna charge in rent. The goal is to create a bunkhouse.
Right.
And so we won't charge in rent, so let's just get out of there, okay? They're paying for what it costs to live in that, or the, the department is paying the cost of fuel and electricity.
And then that's.
And some of that, and that covers some of the other costs, it's the town owns that building, so that's why that's blank this year.
And then the rental charge, that's just a change in, because we provide.
If, if we have to go that way. If there are five full time employees, including the director, if the, if the director's a full time employee in this department.
Right.
That's five full time insurance.
Okay.
Ten thousand, three hundred and twenty per. Luke, there was something I think you had, and I might have cut off in my crunching, it's underneath, oh, duty gear, but Luke had a sidebar that doesn't show up on this Excel page. He broke out.
Medical.
Medical versus gear.
Yeah.
And I think it was eighteen thousand medical, seven thousand.
Seven thousand duty gear.
Just, and we could create another line item or whatever, that it, that it was confusing as to what was actually being spent.
Duty gear is that line we were talking about, that everything gets stuffed into, and the ambulance services never spent twenty-five thousand dollars on duty gear. They were walking around in rag clothes for about two years, and certainly didn't have gear. But it, a lot of that money has gone to a medical, the medical stuff to restock the ambulants and other, other, I don't wanna call them miscellaneous, 'cause it's not really miscellaneous. A lot of it has to do with the medical gear that ends up back to the ambulance.
Um, and actually, actually, going back up to, to the payroll, in this, looking at this different shift, which would have a portion of the shift being on-call. It also looks at, um, a, a, a higher rate of pay when a person's on-call gets called up to take that call, say it's at night. And I built that into it, and I also built into it, what if, on this shift, um, there were fifty separate vacation days? Five people also have ten days essentially, I don't know if that's conservative, it's always a guess, depending on, because it's a department which you have to fill as well. And also, um, that the hope is that we're going to work at having who that is going to be doing second calls, taking second calls. Or taking transfers, and with, you know, if you increase your revenue, you can pay the people, or it increases the revenue. So we don't really know how to build that into it yet, but we know that if it's, if we have, you know, people that are going, if we can get that working. And not turning down transfers, and not losing our coverage in town, but that transfer is gonna cover what we're gonna pay people to do those transfers. Um, and that it's not gonna be approved, it's on duty, you know, technically, not necessarily, 'cause you gotta have somebody on duty. So we haven't got that all worked out, but I tried to, even in this budget, tried to build into it, like I said, by just repeating, um, the twenty-four hour shift. And I was, I knew that I hadn't built into all those same kinds of things, fifty people on vacation, or fifty days of sick, or what, how that would have increased the budget. So it's just a proposal. As you go down, the other changes reflect dispatch contract went down. Or technically, we're splitting it, almost with fifty-fifty with fire department, but you're supposed to split it based on dispatch calls. Technically, the ambulance department should be paying for about eighty percent of the calls, because the police department's not willing to give the calls. So I just split it even up, but in, in the past, we've had it split because of police departments, so government is picking up half. Because we had it in our budget, it's probably okay to sit there. Telephone, I think that's having both a phone here and a phone over in the department, if I'm not mistaken, then that's why that one's twenty-five hundred. 'Cause our phone here is like fifty.
Probably being two internet, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's two internets and having a phone, uh, the internet at the house and a phone that rings here in the ambulance garage. As well as the cell phone line, which is, so two phones in the vehicle, and the director has a cell phone, but we're on T-Mobile, and, um, we're just paying for devices. And as soon as those devices are paid, if they'll last longer than two years, that's gonna drop off, so. Electricity, um, because we're in a different facility, I think the direct response to electricity going down is the one we had a low heat here, so it's possible to have to go out. But electricity for the apartment was always paid too, so I think it's down this year, so.
So the bottom line is, we're not, what you proposed to us versus what was last year, is not to even have a one percent increase. In my mind, and I put math and stuff, it sounds like it's a point two-five, like a quarter of a percent increase.
It's, it's looking at a change in shifting for what our community needs in order to afford it, in order for coverage. But at the same time, there's built in, uh, you know, a full time employee, if they're working first full time, um, you know, we set the schedule, okay? But that reducing overtime, of course, everybody likes overtime, but we, if we can't, if we can't afford the budget, we can't have an ambulance department. So building in, you know, seeing if we can reduce the amount of overtime by the kinds of staff we have and the kinds of coverage we're given. But the opportunity still exists, because if there's, actually, there are calls outside of that one you work, you're willing to take a call on another day, or if you're on-call during the hours. We're suggesting this is the rate you're gonna be paid when you take that call. And it's much higher than the rate if you, we're not on-call.
I mean, this, this type of work is not.
So we don't know, you said it's, that's experimental, but I do know if I proposed the same budget going forward, I think it would be fifty, sixty, seventy thousand higher. In order to try and fill that gap at that rate, and I, I've, I've, I've been looking at this for a couple of years myself, Luke's been in the, in the, uh, police department. We just don't have the calls to support that, but, um, we also, without a second crew, we're losing revenue. So if we can try and figure out a way to, you know, count our employees, work in situ, we can catch more of those calls, but what Luke does for us, uh.
I mean, it's not even the cost of any, just the, the, the line note raises in the, in, in wage is a lot amplified, so kudos to you guys.
And the reason for that is, where, where are we at right now? Ben, I think you know this number two, 'cause we talked about it, how far are we behind on revenue now this year to cover the budget now?
Well, we still haven't been paid, Melissa never got back to me today, but I did reach out to her, and we still haven't received revenues from, um, main care, Medicare, or well care. And that would, and that, and that was in March, where we were about eighty-seven thousand behind. I dare say we're probably at least a hundred thousand or over behind in that revenue increase, uh, in that revenue, the, the, the month and a half of, uh, the gap, so.
But anticipating there's a hundred thousand, they're telling us that they owe us, that hasn't been said. But there's another hundred and thirty thousand that we have, we overspent our two hundred and thirty thousand. What we've currently received in revenue, what we've spent, there's a two hundred and thirty thousand gap. If that's a hundred thousand, maybe it's more, we're still gonna be for the fifth year in a row at a revenue loss, because, because we don't have enough revenue. I've shown the numbers, pretty sure all the surpluses covered the revenue losses for the last five years.
Last year, the number was a hundred and eighty thousand, the year before was a hundred and twenty thousand, the year before, that was eighty thousand.
So there was, uh, so the, all of that revenue has been transferred over to government, 'cause government has paid the bill, so we had a, a universe government, and we did that through. So there no longer is any ambulance surplus at all, in order to cover the shortfall we have this year.
And the shortfall that we have this year are in real dollars.
Real dollars, it's always has.
Not what we should have charged, what we anticipated again, so this is real dollars, pennies on the table, nickel, whatever, this is the real dollar, finally.
That being said, there is still some potential in, for some fee and reimbursement for some of the costs in this department. I mean, it's, it's more than a potential, just time to get that done with all of the plates I'm spending, 'cause I started with. For all the PPP we had to buy that's coming out of that line item, which duty be, that which is reimbursable. So we may be able to recruit, maybe twenty thousand, we think twenty-five thousand funds, so that helps a little bit. But if, uh, we, we only have six hundred runs this year, six hundred runs in any year, even if we get maximum reimbursement, doesn't pay through the budget. So what we're at is a point, we used to have eight hundred, there was a time we had a thousand. That being said, we're moving to a point where, that's why at the last meeting, I said, this is the year we absolutely have to subsidize this department. We cannot pass this budget without a revenue we know we're gonna collect. So if we know we've already lost, and we're gonna, we need to cover this year's loss, if we cover enough money, we can get it from the state. That's the very first thing we have to do, because it's zero money, you gotta go bank and get it. It's, it has to be, the taxpayer has to be paid that, 'cause the taxpayer has paid those bills. So that's the proper use for that too, and that's what it's for, and hopefully, we'll, you know, get, recover that money, uh, and do that. Going forward, next year, this is the year we're going to have to present to the people that we need to raise taxes in order to support our ambulance department. That's why when you talked, when Pete talked about a hundred and twenty-five CFP, and that may still not be enough, but that being said, we can't, if we pass this budget. We need to put some of this budget into the tax management. So knowing that, like I said, without police department, we had a reduction in appropriation, which meant taxes would go down. So this is a time where that would be, I think, probably, well, it's necessary. That's one reason, when I, we started looking at twenty-four hour shift, I know there's ambulance department people in here. If we can't hardly afford where we're at now, adding a huge amount by maintaining, just because it's always been done that way, is not, we're not gonna make it. We're not gonna make it. And so looking at trying to transition, knowing that we're going to have tax, your tax payer dollars. And then the goal would be, can we, can we start cashing more early, that we are losing, if another community is responding and taking our calls? Transfers that were not taken, can we increase our revenue? And if we do that, we definitely go back into surplus, if we've got taxpayer's dollars, right? Certainly we can start building the surplus, if, if need be, but certainly, like I said, it's been a trend. And if the trend has, and, and we know it's driven by the cost of overtime, the cost of insurances, overshot. Has driven the cost of the ambulance department for, for providing, to provide a twenty-four hour service in any shape, where there's somebody ready to respond. This is expensive, like every other town. Now, I will tell you that our contracts are pretty much tied in this year, because surplantation, ambulances already had their meeting, we can send them a high bill. But there was an article that came out in January, in North Carroll, it's, they're contract communities, it's a hundred dollars for capital. Holt went to seventy-four, doing another pub that serves management communities. And I think the bottom line at Holt, they have like ten different communities, and they went from like sixteen eighty-five to seventy-four. This was like the sticker shock that Connor got, limestone, and everybody got from Carroll. And, and Holt said, this is what it costs to do it. Now, we only have two contracts, well, we have three contracts, like the county up at the lake, which we need to negotiate also, we have the, we have. That's not gonna serve us, but if we, you know, looking at whatever communities you're doing in wise, the same reason, it's expensive. And it's in their case, the ambulances, too, maybe to purchase ambulances, what actually ambulance pay right now? Because we've got backup if something happens, that we could get road ready, so that may help us. But we definitely are no longer in the heyday of, uh, the, the revenues are enough to, for the cost of department. So we have to, you know, convince the public that they, that we're gonna run a department that's getting, we're willing to support. And also, we can't vote that budget at all. If I had to vote it based on projected revenue, we would be, we would be saying, well, we've got about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, that's all we're gonna bring in. So that's all we can spend.
What days you want us to cover?
What days you want us to be.
What days do you want ambulance service, what days do you want to choose for the week, we don't have right?
Okay, so I think, you know, um, when we get to that point, that it's something, it's not just monetary, it isn't. 'Cause I, and I sat down, I was done with both of them, and looked at projected, you know, salaries, people, salary, the bottom line, what they made at the end of the year on their W-2. And I'm not gonna reveal that to people here, and what they're gonna make under this shifting in, in the same timeframe, and there really isn't a difference. The difference is that, uh, that money, which is in the, in a different shifting, most of the money is going to main employees. We only need a couple of part timers, one here and one there. So with both, uh, even though it's the same amount, it's not being spread across as many people it takes as it to run a twenty-four hour shift. Because there's an element of being on-call, um, and making that on-call element is important. Every other department has an on-call element. Some of it's it's two days on and two days off, if we're just looking at that a little differently, um, and we think it's, it's gonna work. And then building into it, you know, well, when you're on-call, if you get called, then a higher rate of pay in here, the higher rate of pay that I've been on is a. If it's an on-night call, if you're on-call from this, to this time, that you get called out, it's thirty dollars, you know, it's gonna, well, people. Because you want your on-call, then if you had to, you know, go on that call, because that is the savings to us, but it's a benefit to the employee.
We don't wanna make it much, 'cause the ambulance got called out, they're in the truck, the truck's making money.
So, so that's what was confronted with the financials, and we have, we've been talking about for three, four years, but it's, it's, the trend is that, I mean, the ambulance service is getting to be very expensive. And we, as a community, for many years, we may be the only community that has not tax supported, we can be directly, who, the tax. Financial support to, to, so it's what does our community want? It's not what Nancy wants, it's not even what the ambulance person wants, it's what, it's what the community wants, and what would be the guarantee to, to them. So I get the sense our community wants to know that somebody's gonna be able to respond from our community to their home.
Does the ambulance department set up as a quasi municipal department?
It, it is, we run it as what's called a business activity, just like the wastewater, and quasi municipal, because we started to separate the funds. But that doesn't mean that we have to do this, all towns do this. Actually, I talked to someone, they said, yeah, that, you know, in the Midwest, the ambulance department makes money for the town. Well, it does, but if you look at the bottom line, all it does is, they're still tax supporting. So we miss the ambulance, the ambulance department does, if it becomes, you know, it's always been a department, we can mix the two. If it, if it doesn't have to raise all of its funding, then yes, it makes money, but it's not all the top, it's that it's.
Which brings the second part of my question.
Auditing no issues whatsoever.
Okay, so the second part of my question is, is that we can go through tax payer for additional funds to cover our losses.
Right, okay.
Would you say, and, and roughly?
No, no, I, I'm not saying to recover the losses from last year.
No, 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 no.
But no.
From, from June first forward, okay?
So every year, when we had, we mean anticipated revenues, we always anticipate, the anticipated revenues says, well, we're gonna, we need to raise this much money to meet our budget. But we have the evidence that that doesn't hold a straight face test. I cannot put in that we are gonna raise this much through our billings, because we haven't done it for three years. So that being said, we're being honest with, with our community, and also not getting in trouble by having losses, and then trying to figure out how to cover them after the end, you know, employees need to pay it, so.
So, go ahead.
No, go, go ahead.
Okay, so, and I'm just using these numbers as example, okay? Not, the, please understand, there's nothing concrete here, I'm just using this as an example. So you're, let's say that we are anticipating next year that we need another hundred thousand dollars to fully fund the budget of the ambulance department. So we are, based on last year, or, or the revenue season, anticipated revenue, we would need to raise a hundred thousand dollars to meet the budget. So that hundred thousand potentially represents a two mil increase.
Uh, two mil might be more like a hundred, point nine, hundred thirty, which is about.
One point five.
I'd, I'd say.
Would be ninety-nine, would be ninety-nine, because our, I'm not missing, our rate is sixty-six, correct?
Not a mill rate, our mill rate is a twenty-two.
No, no, that, that each mil is sixty-six.
About, yeah, it's usually based on your value of your town, and our town is sixty-five, you know, you know, whatever. And so it's like one mil of that raises you sixty, sixty-six thousand.
A mil and a half.
Well, actually, I would say probably, to be honest with you, a hundred's probably low, we just said a hundred and eighty last year, a hundred and twenty the year before.
Yeah, like I said.
For safety, I'd go two mil.
I'm just throwing those out, out there, just for the sake of conversation, there's nothing concrete, please, nothing concrete.
But that's what.
This is just, so we could be potentially asking the taxpayers to ante up one point five, two, two mils. To maintain the ambulance service in its present state, right? And that's worth it, okay?
To support the services, and of course, we're. To support the services, and of course, remember, I wanted to put in the CIP, that was like, oh, wouldn't this be nice, to put it in the government CIP? So that, that may be part of it, because if you don't want the tax, I can tell you that the projection right now for main revenue sharing, which is, they're still waiting on things to pass, but they have put out the projection just a week ago, and I'm pretty sure it's at the three point seven five, which is where we're at right now, that main revenue sharing, and of course, they, we're, we're supposed to use it to reduce taxes, we're not supposed to use it to maintain taxes. It's gonna go up ninety thousand dollars, we should receive, at least, at least right now, ninety thousand more than we did this year in main revenue sharing.
Well, if I look at that.
So, and we don't know in Homestead, they're talking about that, we don't know if we're gonna get the money going backwards, they're talking about that, but I, the most recent projection is just about ninety thousand more than we projected we would receive this year. This year, we did receive extra. So knowing that, even if you, you know, I think we're still gonna use the appropriation of what we had from what we call the police department, and it's million to ambulance department, we're still gonna potentially be able to have taxes go down a little bit because of the law. And then as opposed to, but they talked about four point five percent, but I don't think that projection's coming out of my understanding, well, I read everything, that they haven't given us the four point five projection, so maybe it'll be lower than that. So there is some good news on the horizon for taxpayers, too, because they're like, here, you know, oh, you don't need to spend that, but I do think, maybe some of the Republicans are, that ambulance services are important, police services are important, too, but we don't currently have a police department, we do have an ambulance department, and so I guess we may have a need to wanna not have our taxes go down and build up some of our CIP, but maybe go now, to make sure that we don't have. It's gotta come from somewhere, it would be wonderful, I mean, really wonderful, if we were able to share some, start getting some calls from Connor, in agreement with Caribou, start being able to maybe take a limestone caller, to an assistant area, it's where we can't take their whole town, but to, you know, to, you know, I think Caribou runs thin sometimes now, covering so many areas, am I correct? Madawaska's a little thin once in a while, we respond to Madawaska, but, and we have a agreement with them now, and we have billed them, and they have paid us, but the opportunity to get more runs, that not necessarily are from our community, they're to be for us, I don't know, but we don't have a regional kind of setup right now, we tend to, right to. When I say I don't want more runs, I don't wanna have two hundred more people sick or have to go to the hospital on our town, just so that we can, the ambulances, is what I mean, I don't, you know, but that's what drives it. It is possible, I know COVID did, when we look at the months, January, February, March, and April of last year, there was definitely a dip in the number of calls, people going to hospitals, so it might be something turned, you know, but I don't think we'd see, even see a thousand calls, again, population's down, but.
Well, no, we have to work with what we have.
And it's still just a projection, because it could go either way, and the crew is there to be ready to respond, I know there's days that there isn't a single call, and then days they have five, it's not predictable, except for maybe we get some transfers, you know, transfers, if we can, if we can get a schedule and, you know, we're reliable, and can provide, providers to do transfers, those have, we've turned down enough that we know there's a regular, so hopefully, we can do that. And I still think probably Luke needs to go through those numbers again, too, and then just, some of this was just five, six hours of, I'm like, did I make a mistake? Did I check again? You know, should I check again? But I, and, am I being fair? And definitely, it's important to recognize, our department is people. It's people. That's, that's, so, taking care of people, and then being a part of making this service what our town wants, as I said, Ben, Luke and I together, working over the past several months, I think we'd like to try and do this.
So I, I understand where we're going, and I understand that not having the police department gives us some flexibility in the current budget projections that we have, and that this is a good spot to probably divert some of those taxpayer funds from the tax base that we have now. But I also believe that the projects and the town needs to, we, we just, we need to develop or incorporate more money into our CIP accounts, so that we can take care of some of the pressing issues that we have, road maintenance, demolition of old buildings. I'm gonna be the first to tell you that I don't want to raise taxes in order to provide those services, or the things that we do in this town, but I don't think that we should just shift the entirety of the budget from the police department into the ambulance department. I believe it has to be shared between maybe a small tax increase on top of shifting some of that money, so that we can still have additional monies in our budget to do some of the things that we have to do to make this come better. And I know, I thought, I know a lot of people don't wanna hear, you know, anything about increase in taxes, but it comes down to the point where, do you raise taxes, or do you allow buildings and streets and infrastructure to fall apart in your town? There comes a tipping point, and unfortunately.
We're there.
We're at that tipping point. So there's, there's being fiscally responsible, and I believe we're doing everything in our power to remain that way, but I, I can't in good conscience just say we're gonna shift that money that we, not that we appropriated it, but money that was budgeted in the past to the police department into the ambulance service, aren't launching, just say, that's what we're gonna use that money for. I think there are too many other projects that are super important that we, that we get on in this town.
And, and that's definitely going forward, however, you wanna propose it to the public when it gets to the point of doing the tax, is when we find out, right now, I can look at the projection, we need to change it, I said, they could initially change that projection so right now it was still good, although I looked at a projection from April twenty-sixth, and it comes out of the office that does this, and that projection in April was eighty thousand higher than the projection in May, so it was a full one-hundred-and-seventy thousand more than last year, so I'm going, okay, what happened between April and, and now, that projection in May that is changed, and it might be that they were putting in the five percent, I don't think it works, it's, at that point, until it's officially changed, the percentage is voted on, it's based on the sales projection, so it turns out that it really is just a projection, because I think that even in this year's budget, it was projected at two-hundred-and-thirty-five, I think we're gonna get more than that from this year, because it's really based on what the sales saw, we'd get three point seven five percent. So if the sales were good, and they projected a year ago, in April they'd be this much, but now they're this much, each month we get paid, and it's literally like us paying the school. So to some extent, I will tell you what's gonna happen with this year's budget when we close out. There's gonna be a chunk of real money, because we taxed people, for the appropriation of the police department, which we didn't spend. And we are seeing that we're gonna have some higher revenues than we expected, because all we could use was a projection, which means we taxed to meet our budget, so we're gonna have some of our budget and some extra statement. So, if I can get that closer, I will tell you, Joan, I'm thinking between the police, and like I said, one of the things was to set the police department money aside at least for a while, with the intent to resurrect, but it still is in savings, it's still there. And, you know, we look at it in years, so it's still there, maybe don't touch it, but I think that in addition to that, with some of our budgets that are underspent, other budgets, appropriations, because, you know, laying somebody off, or reducing our hours, or not being open, or not spending, or within this one, because emergency services gotta roll, they don't really have the option of working from home, in a sense that they don't have the, and the increase in revenue sharing that was above what we predicted, you know, will be a forty, fifty thousand, and so that goes generally just right into our surplus, that's a good thing, too. So, looking at those numbers, I think that we can maybe say, okay, let's take that seventy-five up to a hundred in CIP, you know, bump it up, we know that we'll be okay, you know, I think we should, and putting a hundred thousand into the paving, I started doing it, and I talked to Rick, no paving projects this year. One, we're too late, two, there's nothing that's so bad, so we're gonna bank that and not spend it, which means, I think, we spent, I don't know if we spent the fifty-five in this year's budget, or checked to come out, did we spend it? You should spend it in the year coming up, so there may be, I'm projecting a hundred in the next year's budget, but the fifty-five that we don't spend is gonna go into, go directly into the loss of safety, so. Not to say that that's gonna, that solved your problem real good to go, but you're very right, sometimes actually budget for surplus. And CIP, both, just because you can't, well, like with the sword plant, you know, you can't, if all you do is operate, and you don't collect money to fix the building, that's where we're at, at least in, and we've done okay, so. The opportunity to maybe with, you know, more grant funding to help, one of the things, emergency services are supported by some of these bills that are out there. We actually looked, reached into, reached out for PPP money, and if we actually were quasi municipal, and had it set up, and filed an IRS nine ninety, we could have bought some money to pay an ambulance company, but these families don't usually do that, we're not required to fire taxpayers. So we couldn't access those PPP funds, even though we were acting as if we were business, so. Not to say that we wanna go that way in the future, per se, but there are some public entities that were able to do that, because they function as a nonprofit, how people work as a nonprofit. I think there's, are gonna see some, but I, I think people have to realize that, if you run tight on operations and don't realize that operations involve buildings and trucks and ambulances, that you, they start breaking down, and then you have to make the tough decisions, so I think it's a good idea, for sure, so. But I think, in fact, I think we, I'm gonna still have to come back to you and refine this a little bit, but I think it gets us in the ballpark, and it's a, if for some reason, the fine's gone, we start having no calls, right? Particularly if the staff, you know, we start doing those transfers, and we start people, paying people this hard, whoa, well, if that's generating revenue, and we have the revenue to pay the people, we just won't appropriate more in a town, another town meeting, because you say, I got the revenue right here, I just gotta make sure I'm allowed to spend it, so. If, if, I'll put it in now, well, we might think we have it as real money, that's one challenge.
Yeah, and I, I prefer that you go with past history and what we're actually turning in and not.
I think the improvement will.
Absolutely, that's, and, and again, if we have to go to quasi municipal and, and fund it to keep it, I'm all for it, because we need to have it.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure the community wants to not be in the situation towns were when they were told the problem was pulling out, absolute panic for some people, so.
Right.
And even if we said, oh, hey, let's just contract Caribou, they're gonna charge us a hundred dollars, that's a hundred dollars per capita, that's one thousand, or one hundred ninety thousand, two hundred thousand's less than this, but you know what, you still have to pay it. So if you don't have any revenue, you're gonna be paying four mils or whatever to Caribou, so it's really not a solution, but I mean, and I don't, because they would have to hire people to fill our ambulances or buy our ambulances. So you know what, it isn't just, you know, hey, hey, we're gonna save money, because, yeah, I, I think, and I hope there's somebody, crew that's here, or who we have in the future, working with us to, to do what we can, but service to the public is number one.
Absolutely.
Not making money, that's a part of it, service, good, good healthcare, good medical care, good service to our citizens, communities, and the other communities we serve, that's, that's our law, and, so. Are we allowed to ask questions now, or?
Yeah, hold on, there, and for a little while, I told my lawyer.
So, this other proposed schedule you're talking about, I'm assuming a sixteen-hour shift with eight hours on-call, correct?